Play. That call. I'm sure it's good. Good, all good? Yep. So this is where we do that. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call to order the Village of Roscoe Board Meeting. It is Tuesday, May 6th. Shall we stand? I pledge allegiance to my flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. When I motion, I'm under God, if you're vindictive, liberty has come. Babcock?
Here.
Malaco?
Here.
Teddy? Here. Clock?
Here.
Simon?
Here.
Right?
Here.
Gustafson? Present. Item number one, may I have a motion to approve the minutes from our meeting of April 15?
The move, second.
Babcock?
Yes.
Teddy? Yes. Malaco?
Yes.
Clock?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Simon?
Yes.
Item two, may I have a motion to approve the minutes from the committee of the whole meeting of April 15?
The move. Second.
Clock?
Uh, yes.
Teddy? Yes. Malaco?
Yes.
Simon?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Babcock?
Yes.
Item three, may I have a motion to approve the minutes from the liquor commission meeting of January 21st?
The move. Second.
Teddy?
Yes.
Clock?
Yes.
Malaco?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Simon?
Yes.
Babcock?
Yes.
Next item, public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board? Is there anyone remotely? There'll be another opportunity later in the meeting. Moving on then, President's Report. Tonight, we have the honor of witnessing swearing in of our newest police officer, Connor Jordan. I'll ask Chief Hawley to make the formal introduction.
Thank you. So Connor actually was graduated from the academy on April 24th, couple of weeks ago, and he's currently in the FTO program for next three months. Just kind of background on him, he bought recently a house in Belwood here with his girlfriend Reagan, got a father, two older siblings, he's a proud Ohio State fan. And his best time is good hiking, fishing, and anything else outdoors. Just a little bit about him. Studio the old buff. That's me. Where's your right hand? I state your name.
I, Connor Jordan.
Do solemnly swear that I will support Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties as police officer.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties as police officer.
Of the police department of the Village of Roscoe.
Of police department of the Village of Roscoe.
Winnebago County, Illinois.
Winnebago County, Illinois.
According to best my abilities.
According to the best my abilities.
Congratulations.
Sir.
It's Reagan's girlfriend, she'll be pinned in.
Next on our agenda. I'm sure all of you have seen members of our Public Works Department working diligently, moving snow, salping ice, patching, doing all of those things that help us get around in the belt. What I would like to do this evening is deliver a proclamation in recognition of National Public Works Week. National Public Works Week will take place May 18th through May 24th. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to public health, high quality of life, and the well-being of the people of the Village of Roscoe. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided with the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures, and these essential force systems. And whereas it is in the public interest for citizens, civic leaders, and children in the Village of Roscoe to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And now therefore, I, Carol Gustafson, President of the Village of Roscoe, do hereby designate the week of May 18th through 24th, 2025, as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies and activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and advancing the quality of life for all of us. Now, I know our department has some events planned. You have a statement in your docs as to what's going to happen. All of this will be on social media. And these individuals within our department are truly the unsung heroes here within the village. Without them, we would not be able to navigate safely. They show up and do all kinds of support efforts for all of our public events going above and beyond, and they enjoy doing it. So whenever you see them, I know you congratulate them, speak with them, but. Next on the agenda, another bit of good news. I would like to say, an important member of the Roscoe staff, and that is Janelle. Janelle is an integral part of what happens within the Village of Roscoe, permitting, special events, all manner of things. And she took it upon herself to do Roscoe's version of Restaurant Week. And anecdotally, not that we had the official way to count, but we hear that restaurant traffic increased, which was the goal. We had many individuals who participated in visiting those establishments, and seven people were awarded prizes. So Restaurant Week is declared a success. It will happen again. There will be tweaks. And look forward to it again. So again, kudos to Janelle for getting this organized as Roscoe's Restaurant Week. Okay, moving on. Treasurers' Report, you have before you this evening all manners of the expenditures. We have total expenditures of $142,065.17. Payroll of $153,972.17. You're asked then to approve the aggregate total of $296,037.34. May I have a motion to pay the bills?
Second.
Any other question about any of those?
What does it leave us in the total?
In the total fund, the balance in the pool checking account after this expenditure is $7,581,369.31. Seven million, five eighty-one, three sixty-nine, thirty-one. And motor fuel, $1,768,523.38. So we have a motion and a second. Teddy?
Yes.
Malaco?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Simon?
Yes.
Babcock?
Yes.
Clock?
Yes.
Going on, may I have a motion to go into executive session for very, very brief look at the litigation?
The move. Second.
Clock?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Malaco?
Yes.
Babcock?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Simon? And in this executive session, I would include the trustees-elect, Broda and Mead. And we will convene in my office. There will not be enough chairs, but this will be short, so some of us.
We got her.
Ready?
Yes.
May I have a motion to go back into open session?
The move. Second.
Babcock?
Yes.
Malaco?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Clock?
Yes.
Simon?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
No action taken in the executive session. Going on to our consent agenda. There are four items before you. I will just read the titles, but ask for one vote in total for those four items. Approve, is there a motion to approve Resolution 2025-17, authorizing a contract with Bear Graham and Associates LLC to assist with the development of the village as fiscal year 2026 for 2030 capital improvement program and subject to three study proposal, quoted amount $69,500. A motion to approve Resolution 2025-18, authorizing RFP for the design services related to the border park base due expansion. Approval of Resolution 2025-R19, authorizing the engagement of Bear Graham and Associates to complete a Phase II environmental study for 10517 Main Street property. And approval of Resolution 2025-20, approving a two-year contract with Axon Enterprises in the amount of $6,937.22. Is there a motion to approve these four resolutions?
The move, second.
Teddy?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Simon?
Yes.
Malaco?
Yes.
Babcock?
Yes.
Clock?
Yes.
Can we ask a question at 12 to get a date, like maybe a target date?
Uh, how about as we get back to tomorrow when we know that?
Right, I'll have, we can address it in just a moment. Okay.
I'm under final action. They have a motion to approve Resolution 2025-R14.1, the purchase of two Kubota ZD-1672-inch zero-turn mowers from Bob Ba... of Brockford for the quoted amount of $39,847.41. And as your docs indicated, the company had made a mistake when they quoted a credit. They were in the habit of doubling their credit, and it took us to discover that for them. So instead of a $10,000 credit, this $5,000 credit. Therefore, the dollar amount went up to what you see before you. However, it was a budgeted item, and this comes under the like of this item. So is there a motion to approve Resolution 2025-R14?
The move. Second.
Vote. Second.
Okay.
Hey, Babcock?
Yes.
Malaco?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Simon?
Yes.
Clock?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
They have a motion to approve Resolution 2025-R21 for Fritz's Landscaping, quoted amount of $32,245 for rebuilding the village hall, retaining wall, and restoration. Sure.
The move. Second.
Teddy?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Simon?
Yes.
Babcock?
Yes.
Clock?
Yes.
Malaco?
Yes.
Thank you. Item 16, may I have a motion to approve Resolution 2025-R22, authorizing entering into an agreement to retain Lashley and Bear PC and to continue the engagement of Attorney Michael McGinnity as special counsel for the Village of Roscoe in relation to the village's involvement in Peyton versus Ayo Smith Corporation.
The move, second.
Teddy?
Yes.
Malaco?
Yes.
Clock?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Babcock?
Yes.
Simon?
Yes.
And at this time, I would like to formally thank those board members who will be leaving us temporarily for their years of service. Trustee Malaco, you must stand and show your shirt. If you hadn't noticed, this was original attire. It's a long time ago. Village of Roscoe uses this for announcing members of the board.
It was the first village approved shirt, first board approved design and a shirt. That year, we took these and went to the IML, and we also wore them in up parades for a few years. The funny story that I told Mike that I would tell is that when we went to the IML, we all went downstairs to eat, and we'd be getting all these kudos because we were the first board to show up like that. First of all, it was a group, complete group, all seven of us went. And to have the shirts, but we sat down at the IML at the Hilton, in the restaurant, and we were sitting there eating, and we realized as we looked up, there was people kind of talking. All of the waiters had this colored shirt. So they thought we were all new waiters sitting there. So it was kind of funny for the few days we were there. Every time we sat down and ate at the restaurant, we looked like the waiting staff. But I thought it was very appropriate that in '07, we were a group of people that had different ideas for the village, different philosophies. And while we were in this room, we argued those philosophies and where we wanted to be. But when we walked out the door, we wore these shirts. And whether you think they're orange is odd or not, we were a group. And that's kind of why I wore it, to be that symbol that I hope this new group. While you're in this room, you can argue and fight for different things. But when you go out there in front of the citizens, that you go out there as a group, a unified force, a unified voice, and I just thought that was appropriate. So I dug this one out and brought it out. So that's why I wore it.
Trustee, this is not a boomerang. And you may or may not know that Trustee Petty has been on the board since 2009. The only person for that length of consecutive service. So we thank you for your dedication and stamina for doing this all of these years. The color you've added to the board with your scarves and your jackets, you may comment here. Any comments here? You really is a beautiful plant. Thank you. Thank you for your consecutive years of service. It's what my mother called it.
Oh, cool.
I was, okay. Yes, you know you're in trouble. So, any part of you remarks?
No, I, I, I've enjoyed my time here. I've been thinking about it. I really, really pleased about all world. That was not in existence when I first came in American, strange.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Our clerk, who has weathered all kinds of technical glitches tonight, and has been resourceful in trying to solve all those problems and juggle all the paperwork that comes her way. Stephanie Rechey, please, for years of service as village clerk, and wish you well. Thank you. Very short break, and then we will reconvene with swearing in of the board members. So.
Looking for one shirt? Always keep.
Yeah, thank you. The motion to adjourn. Oh, is there a motion to temporarily adjourn senior?
Someone eyes. Back in.
Okay. There was. We're hoping in a second. Babcock?
Yes.
Malaco?
No.
Teddy?
Yes.
Clock?
Yes.
Simon?
Yes.
Right?
Yes. Back one.
So we have a short break, and then we will reconvene.
I was gonna.
Thanks for that. I mean.
But not, not one. Is that what? Oh, that would be like for them, it's like the living man.
Yeah, I was over there. I keep seeing one. Yeah, nice. With the rock, Brian.
We'll start.
I wouldn't. You look like you're a lot of players.
I get that one, I just. Tonight, I'm gonna use.
Thank you. An agenda? Sister. I would like to crawl back into order, the village board meeting. Basics. We will next swear in a newly elected officials. So if I may have clerk and Steve Clock, Trustee Broda, Trustee Lee, to stand and work in his center there. I'm sure many of you know who these individuals are, but in case you don't, Kim Garza, John Broda, Justin Clock, and Dean Mead. I'll ask you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, John Garza.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As a member of the, as clerk, the village clerk.
As a member of the trustees' trustees.
For the Village of Roscoe, Winnebago County, Illinois, according to the best of my ability.
For the Village of Roscoe, Winnebago County, State of the.
According to the best of. That wasn't just, thank you. Congratulations. Pictures?
Do you want your pictures?
Pictures.
Do you want to get your pictures? It's very cool. Don't screw it up.
I'm gonna put you in Ford, see you with thinner.
Say banana. Right, you wanna say.
Now that we have our office, our six partners, our new clerk, we'll call the roll. Babcock?
Here.
Broda?
Here.
Mead?
Here.
Clock?
Here.
Simon?
Here.
Right?
Here.
On the agenda, I would like motion to take 21, 22, and 23 as a group before you are nominations to the CBA. So is there a motion to approve the confirmation of Teresa Sridla filled a vacant unexpired term on the zoning board of appeals? An appointment of Daniel Spinazola to also serve on the zoning board of appeals? And an appointment of Rich Butera to serve as chair of the zoning board of appeals? May I have a motion to approve? May I have a motion to approve those appointments?
So move. Second.
Broda?
Yes.
Mead?
Yes.
Block?
Yes.
Simon?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Babcock?
Yes.
I'd like to call Mr. Terra and Mrs. Spridla to the center, please. For the oath, Mr. Spinazola couldn't be here this evening, but we'll swear in at another time. Okay. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, the name of the trustee, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Yes, I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties as a member of the zoning board of appeals.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties as a member of the zoning board of appeals.
For the village of Roscoe, Winnebago County, Illinois.
The village of Roscoe, Winnebago County, Illinois.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I thank you so much. These are part two of new CVA members. Yay! Then you can send it to me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I will see you next week.
Next. May I have a motion to approve the confirmation of Alan Harba to the police pension board for the village of Roscoe for a full two-year term? The second was. Mead?
Yes.
Block?
Yes.
Simon?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Broda?
Yes.
Babcock?
Yes.
I'd like to call Mr. Harba to the center. And if you're unaware, Mr. Harba has served as our illustrious Chair of the Police Pension Board. We value his commitment and his dedication and his experience and his willingness to go through annual trainings.
Tomorrow I start.
So raise your right hand and repeat after me. I?
I, Alan Harba.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As a member of the police pension board.
As a member of the police pension board.
For the village of Roscoe, Winnebago County, Illinois.
Village of Roscoe, Winnebago County, Illinois.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my ability.
And again, thank you so much. Lessons and reports. Having none, we'll use some of those and commit to the whole. Public comment. Anyone in the audience wish to make public comment? Anyone online hearing none? No need for an executive session. May I have a motion to adjourn the board meetings?
No move. I'll make a second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting, board meeting is adjourned. We'll to give you the call.